Mayor, you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order City Council Subcenter Agency to the Westminster Community Development Agency meeting right now, 5:14 PM. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Tom?
Yeah?
Vice Mayor Monzo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Doe?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
I'm here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yeah.
Mayor, all members are present and you have a form.
Thank you. Next salute to the flat will be Vice Mayor Manzo. Please stand.
Please place your heart of your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And next we have report from J.D. Clark. You have to unmute.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I do not have any reports for this special meeting.
Thank you so much. So next we have oral communication.
This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding items only on the agenda unless the public has five minutes to speak unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council. There were no e comments submitted for this item and anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I currently see two speakers. Camilla Overbeek, you may begin.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Camilla Overbeek, resident of Westminster. I'd like to begin by saying, in my opinion, this special meeting was not properly noticed. It was first posted at approximately 4:45 yesterday and emails were not actually received until 5:08 yesterday. This would put it outside the 24-hour window. Second, the staff report was modified originally at 5:21 yesterday with another modification happening today at 1:07 PM. And this meeting was never published on the city calendar, so for those who were who were looking for start time would never have known unless they actually visited the agenda section. With the short notice, it gives the appearance that the city is trying to push things through with without adequate or sufficient input from residents. As for the line items included in the staff report, I have to say I'm quite perplexed. The city was allocated $23.7 million, yet all of these items amount to $38,647,979, with recurring expenses of $1.6 million thereafter. Why, if you are given a budget of $23.7 million, would you come up with ideas that amount to so much more? That's not how budgets work. Additionally, I see so much allocated to buildings and HVAC systems. What about the community? What about residents who've been hit hard by the pandemic? On this chart, there is $7.3 million allocated for park improvements. I live in a neighborhood and I could be incorrect, but I'm fairly certain I'm not, but it is the only neighborhood in Westminster without a park. Heritage Park is nothing more than the city than the parking lot for the Chamber of Commerce with pavers where grass once was. Perhaps some of that funding to go to find a location for a park or give us back what little park we did have. Or better yet, what about investing in items that benefit people while simultaneously helping individuals who are facing food insecurity? Creating a community garden would do just that while also bringing about opportunities for the community to come together and bridge the gap where so much division has been sown. It could also provide opportunities for members of the public to learn new hobbies such as composting or just basic general gardening. Just a simple thought to spark discussion. I would ask that before moving forward with any items on this list, you seek community input and really focus on the residents and improving the quality of life for the collective. Now is not the time to focus on hiring more people or adding more expenses to our already critical financial situation. The goal should be centered around doing the most good to help the residents within the confines of a budget. I sincerely hope this item can be tabled and brought back with better insight around the actual needs of the community. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Terry Rains. You may begin.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I received an agenda alert last night at 5:08 PM about this special study session at 5:00 PM, but the agenda says it was posted 72 hours before the meeting, a typo. I couldn't access the staff report until 5:32 PM. I encountered errors with the city's website, including a very concerning one that displayed an internal backend error message complete with city staff sign-in credentials. I immediately reported these issues to staff. This makes me wonder how secure the city's website really is. From what I understand, city clerk staff can't even access the agenda system remotely from home, but yet I was almost able to as a member of the public. Why on earth didn't staff plan for and notice a special study session about ARPA funds at the same time as a regular meeting agenda was posted last Thursday? Perhaps to ensure the public doesn't know about it or have ample opportunity to provide input on how the city should spend the $23.7 million in ARPA funds. Do better, Westminster. In my regular public comments later tonight, you'll hear me ask why ARPA funding was not even mentioned in the mid-year budget review staff report, item 3.7. Other cities have addressed ARPA in their mid-year budget reviews. I also wonder what the status is as far as funding ideas and when those ideas would come before the council specifically to seek direction. The study session is too little, too late. The staff report is incomplete, inaccurate, and useless as far as evaluating potential programs to fund with this money. First, there is no mention or explanation of the interim final rule versus the final rule, the latter of which provides local governments greater flexibility to address COVID public health emergency and support their communities. The final rule goes into effect next month and replaces the interim final rule issued by the Treasury in May 2021. Second, the prohibited use of ARPA funds to offset either directly or indirectly a tax cut made since March 3, 2021 does not apply to cities as the staff report wrongly states. It only applies to states and territories. Third, the narrative list of potential programs is vague and useless. It does not explain these programs in detail, so it's not a narrative of anything. If staff thinks these are great ideas on how to use these funds, why not explain each one in detail in writing in the staff report ahead of time so council and public can evaluate them properly and so as promising to provide more information during the session. Requests are $16 million more than the available funds, yet no direction from councils requested at the study session. Just when exactly will staff be asking council and the public for that direction? I have ideas on what to cut from the list, but I need to hear details about each program first, not just vague titles. Only a few of these programs align with the true spirit of this funding. Priority must be to replace documented lost revenue due to the pandemic, support public health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Special emphasis should be placed on assisting households impacted and disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Going down the list, please provide the who, what, where, when, and why of the $4 million for the number one and number three, resources to address crime increase due to the pandemic and essential worker pay. Does the latter maintain focus on lower income and frontline workers? Is number seven, $1.17 million in critical technology upgrades for digital security for the PD or the entire city? Number 10 is almost $2 million for HVAC upgrades in city buildings, and I'm not sure about that one. I'd love to see our parks upgraded according to the parks master plan, but I don't agree with spending one-third of these funds, $7.3 million, to upgrade playgrounds and ballfields. Number 14, we have other funding sources for park improvements and a long-range plan in place. Yes, to some of the funds for this purpose, but not $7.3 million. How about improvements that benefit all residents of all ages and especially the low-income households? Low-cost, high-speed broadband access citywide is an idea. The $3.5 million in storm drain improvements might comply with the infrastructure guidance. I'm not sure. More should go toward direct assistance to low-income households, not just small amounts for rent, food, and utility assistance. Businesses have already received massive assistance from the local county, state, and federal government, so it's no to number 25, waiving $1.425 million in business license renewal fees. No. The city keeps allocating all sorts of money on paper for a homeless shelter, $4 million in these ARPA funds alone, number 29. But does nothing to make one happen? What happened to the idea of converting the Motel 6 into permanent supportive housing, which is more effective than a temporary shelter? If you put $4 million into an affordable housing project, number 30, how about assuring that the housing is truly affordable by subsidizing rents so they can be set as a fixed percentage of the tenant's income, the only true affordable housing option for extremely low and very low household income households? In closing, staff needs to do a lot more work on this and provide ample opportunity for council and the public to provide direction and input on how to spend this money. Most cities are far beyond where we are in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jessica Lustano. You may begin.
Hello. I'm speaking with a little bit of ingrowness because I wasn't really sure exactly what was going to happen at this meeting. Since it's a study session, I sort of thought it would be a time for staff and council members to interact and talk about these different things and shave this budget down and prioritize. So I thought that I might give you a little bit of feedback that I've gathered by talking to some community members. I had an opportunity to do some door knocking a few months ago and talk to people in the community about their concerns, their priorities, and the number one concern that people talked about that they wanted addressed was homelessness in Westminster. And the second thing that they talked about was feeling safe in their community. Some people said that there was a rise in property crime in their neighborhood and they didn't feel safe. So I was hoping that in this discussion, you could sort of just use that information to perhaps use that information to address homelessness and public safety, make those priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Walsh. You may begin speaking.
Hi. I just wanted to take a moment or two because in the morning, well, actually yesterday, when I did see this popped up, I was like, oh, my God, what the heck? You know, very upset like others were. And then this morning, I was talking to fellow residents and I decided that I wanted to call and see if I couldn't get squeeze a little more information out of City Hall on this subject. So I was able to talk to our city manager who explained to me, and you know, maybe she calmed me down a little bit, that this tonight is a very like beginning step in the ideas that were written on, I believe, attachment one was just kind of a starting point. I did express that I thought it would be a good thing to have residents being able to put in, you know, their suggestions and whatnot. And I believe that is, you know, I'm sure that Christine will maybe touch on this before things get started, but I'm pretty sure she said that we would be able to throw in our suggestions as well as residents in this regard. You know, I asked her if there was a reason that we were, you know, doing it like special meeting, if it was a it was a rush, like, do we have to do it in, you know, a one-week time or something like that? And she said, no. So that definitely, you know, calmed my heels a bit, but I do, you know, I agree that there are some things on that list that I was like, whoa, really? And I love you, City Hall, but I'm just saying that our kids at the schools don't even have air conditioning at all. So if you have some that's partially working, I'm just saying, you'll be fine for now. So I just, I wanted to, you know, throw that out there that I did, you know, call and get some information. So I would suggest that if people have concerns or questions to call because, I mean, five, I'm, Christine, you're going to kill me for saying this, but you know, it was what, like, five, 10 minutes, and she called me right back. So, you know, I won't say that she's going to call you back that fast, but she will call you back and she'll help you out with any questions that you have. And I, I kept her on the phone for quite some time, and she answered every single question that she legally could. So thank you, Christine, for that. And I just want to confirm that tonight, and someone, someone can just give me a yes or no on this, that'd be great. Tonight, there should be three areas for public comments. One would be this one, one would be for closed session, and one would be for the regular general session. Is that correct?
So this is actually, yeah, this is a separate meeting that we're having right now. So when we're done, we go to the next thing and yeah, closed session, separate. There's an oral comment for that and public hearing for that.
Okay, that's, I just, I thought that was the case, but I wanted to make sure. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
And actually, there's also a public comment for the public hearing we're having tonight. So that's the fourth one.
Mayor, that concludes anyone wishing to speak at this time unless there are anyone, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Can I have a question real quick? Please. Christine, did you address the issue that the public has brought up in the public comments that we did not follow the procedure posting all the agenda for the special meeting? Is that correct? Or we did everything by the book?
If I may respond to that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe, we did post within the 24 hours. There was a typo listed on the agenda that was brought up with one of the members of the public that at the bottom of the agenda, it says that it was posted 72 hours. It was not. It was posted within a 24-hour period, and I do attest to that. So that was a typo, but it was posted for the 24-hour Required Brown Act.
So we did everything by the book?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, with that, I'd like to close oral communication. And the only item that we go to discuss is discussion of potential program and project budget related to American Rescue Plan Act funds. So staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. This is the first time that you are receiving and viewing what is the list of potential programs related to ARPA funds. So this list has been compiled based on what staff has looked at as potential uses that are eligible through, you know, through this program. These are not in any means set in stone in any particular way. These are just suggestions based on what staff has identified as particular needs in the city. You know, the city did receive what would be $23.7 million in ARPA funds. And the, it's true, the estimated costs listed on here exceed that amount. But again, this is the first of what we would like to have is multiple conversations and discussions with you regarding what your, you know, what your priorities may be, what, you know, what the community's priorities are, and how we can best allocate the funds for the different projects. So this list consists of, again, things that staff has identified, but it also includes some of the, some of the programs that the city council has made clear that, you know, that you would like as a priority over the past couple of months, you know, during, during our regular meetings. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to, to our interim community development director, Debbie, who will go through this. And so we also wanted to note, too, the, this is a list, this is a preliminary list, and staff will be going down each line item to provide what that, what that narrative is, which is why you don't have an actual copy. So take it away, Debbie.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen to include the list. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry. Okay. Okay. What I'm going to do is read the list, the items within one category, and then stop and see if the council has any questions or needs any additional information on those items in that category. We broke it down into public safety and security, community improvements, community assistance, addressing homelessness, affordable housing development, and the computer aided dispatch. So beginning with public safety and security, number one is resources to address crime increases due to the pandemic. We estimated the cost, excuse me, at $1 million and an ongoing annual cost. This is a column that would identify if this cost continues beyond the ARPA period, just so that information is available to council. This is for equipment and technology for the police department. Number two is additional, one additional dispatcher position that annual cost is $125,000. So for the ARPA period, it would amount to approximately $625,000. The essential worker pay, ARPA allows the city to establish a premium pay for essential workers who worked during the pandemic, and all city employees are considered essential workers. This $3 million estimate is just that, an estimate, as the program parameters would have to be further defined. Number four is the emergency operation consultant contract. This is for the services that are currently being provided by David Segura. This $90,000 estimated cost is, is based on a $60,000 annual cost, but 75% of year one would be COVID-related, and then a 25% decrease each year until it zeroes out. Number five is an online portal for safety training. This is for HR to develop an online training platform to create a safe option for all employees to receive mandatory training, and its estimated cost is $150,000. Number six is for PPE and disaffected supplies for $35,000. Number seven is critical infrastructure technology upgrades for digital security. This is for citywide security, and that's estimated at $1,170,000. Number eight is phone system upgrades, $162,000 for the police department and $26,000 for City Hall for a total of $188,000. Number nine is HVAC systems upgrades for City Hall, the council chambers, and the community service and senior center buildings. This is for upgraded air filtration systems, and that total is $1.9 million. We also have number 10 HVAC system upgrade for the unit serving the data center specifically to protect the data center, to continue those services through the, our infrastructure for $250,000. Number 11 is a comprehensive council chamber upgrade for the audiovisual portion of the system. That's $132,100. Number 12 was to create an alternate, alternate location for city council meetings to accommodate more people. Estimated at 100,000, this would equip the east-west room so that we may hold and broadcast city council meetings from that location. And number 13 is a, for police department overtime hours of $550,000. So those are the 13 items that staff identified that are part of the public safety and security category. I do want to say that we did have all of these items that are on the list looked at by the city attorney's office to ensure that they are eligible for and meet the requirements for ARPA expenditures. So at this point, I want to stop and ask the council if they have any questions or need any additional information on any one of those public safety and security items.
Thank you so much for your report. I have a question on number seven, number nine, number 11. Is anywhere that you can provide us with more detail, what reason that we need to upgrade the digital security for our infrastructure?
Certainly. What I'm going to do is refer us back to the department that initiated this, those items. So I want to focus first with our IT manager on number seven and number 11. Those are hers. So Noemi, if you could address those.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So number seven is general server firmware IT-related upgrade that nowadays is required due to elevated cybersecurity threats that is happening throughout the world. And it's upgrading our servers and infrastructure to be able to maintain the city's security systems. Number 11 is council chamber upgrade. It's the system that has been in place. My understanding, I wasn't here when it was designed and implemented, but it has been many years ago, and it's due for an upgrade. We are trying to fix the issues as they come up, but ideally it has to be replaced. So that's an attempt to do the replacement.
Thank you so much for that. And how about number nine? We need to upgrade City Hall, Council Chamber, community service, and senior center. So is that a building kind of really old and really need an improvement?
Sure.
Yeah.
Debbie, I'll answer that question. You being mayors and member of council. So all of the three buildings and civic centers that we have, you know, HVAC system pretty much going to be more than 20 years old or more. And a lot of them are not meeting the requirements right now as far as clean air, clean environmental requirements. Some of the parks are not even, we can find out there because they outdated. And so with the new system we're proposing that will meet the requirements, that means they're going to take the outside air and go into the system better, and that that will have a better filtration system and protecting the employee as well as a member of the public in those building.
Thank you. Yes, can you explain a little bit more about the item number three, please?
Item number three, essential worker pay. I'm going to call on the HR director to identify or discuss that item.
Good evening. So this item is on there as a placeholder. We are currently still doing our research, but as part of the ARPA funds, there has been a suggestion that we could use funds towards providing pay for people who were here during COVID, dealt with the public, or were mandated to come to work during that period of time. So this number is currently a placeholder. We're still doing our research on if that is applicable for us and how we could apply it at this point.
Mayor, is there a timeline when we have to approve or adopt or spend this money? Yeah, yes. In terms of the timeline, it has to begin, it covers programs that were incurred on or after March 3, 2021. They must be obligated by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026. So if so, what is a rush? This, as the city manager mentioned, is the, just the first discussion with the council on items that we've identified just for discussion and review. on items that we've identified, just for discussion and review purposes.
Yeah, I'll add to that. There's, there's really, there's really no rush except for that timeline. Other cities have gone and, and you know, it's been mentioned that other cities have already moved forward with trying to spend this money, et cetera. You know, where we've obviously had a lot of changes in the last, you know. So, so there's, there's really no rush per se.
I want us to spend this money wisely.
Absolutely.
So I really don't see a rush, especially when I hear some outcries.
Well, this is, again, this is, there's, there's some outcries regarding, you know, that we've presented a list. I mean, there are many different ways that this, you know, this could be done. This was just one particular, this is one particular method that we went with is that we internally as staff looked at, you know, looked at things based on, you know, there were a few items that were presented, you know, at, at city council meetings in regards to what priorities are. You know, we talked about homelessness, we talked about food resiliency programs over the course of time. These are, you know, again, these are ideas. This is just the absolute first discussion. It's not, no one's asking for any kind of approval tonight. It's just jump-starting this conversation as to what this council and community feels are priorities for use of these funds.
Is there a reason why we only discussed the first 13 items? And then is that like we go by section, by section?
Yes, we are going by section by section just because it's, you know, trying to, trying to organize the thoughts.
Yeah.
Okay. Could somebody explain the number 11 for me? How do we gonna, no, I'm sorry, the number 12. Alternate alternative location, proceed council meeting to accommodate more people. What is that exactly, what's the, what's the ideas?
So the idea behind that, so during this, during this COVID time, we were looking at, you know, like, for example, city of Garden Grove. They couldn't have their meeting in their council chambers to accommodate the people. They needed more space, more distancing, et cetera. And they have what's considered a multi-purpose use, a multi-purpose use room or, or, you know, community room that they were using for their meetings. And so it got for us to think, you know, we started thinking about the fact that we don't have an alternative location. Everything always ends up having to be in the council chambers. And if we were to have a situation where we needed more space or we needed an alternative space, we don't have it. The Rose Center does not accommodate for a council meeting for us to be able to do this. The community center rooms were not as well-equipped for that. So that's, so the, the, and so for the, for that, it would be looking at, you know, looking at creating and having equipment and creating alternative location that would essentially be meeting, you know, not meaning friendly, but you know, but you could, you could have a meeting in it.
Would you?
I have, before that, I have a quick question for city, city manager. I think before we, there was a discussion about the cost recovery due to pandemic expenses. Is that included in any of these numbers, or is that? How is that, how do you figure that in there? You know, money is that we were, the city have already spent, you know, on COVID-related issues.
So I know where you're getting with that. I think Erin can actually answer that a little bit better than I can. Because you're talking about the previous COVID funds that are not related to ARPA funds, correct?
Correct, yeah. I mean, is that, you know, how do we, do we, is there a way to recover that money? Does it have to come through ARPA, or is there other sources? Can we recover that through other sources?
So we're trying to recover as much as we can from FEMA, and, and we're going through that process. And we did get some of the CARES funding that we were able to use to recover some of our costs as well. The ARPA funds can't be used for anything prior to March of '21, so we wouldn't be able to go back for that anyway. But there are some police overtime hours on this one that would be reimbursing us to an extent. And we're still trying to get as much as we can from, from the FEMA process.
So there's still a possibility to cover like police overtime through that, correct?
Through FEMA, yes, and we have applied for some of it. But I, and I'm not sure, maybe the police chief can say what then, what was behind this particular 550, 550,000, but I do know we are going for funding from alternate sources.
All right, thank you.
Do we want to continue on to community improvement? There are, let me move this down. I try, I got feedback that perhaps I should blow up the screen, so hopefully this is large enough for everyone to see.
Can you move it to the left so you can see the money, the dollar amounts?
Let me see. I'm trying to move it to, like, is that big enough?
A little more, just a little more, we can see the number in the left.
Okay.
Almost there, okay.
Okay. All right. The first one under community improvements is for 7.3 million dollars and includes improving ball fields at Buckingham, Westminster Park, Park West, and Siegler and Galepsy Parks for 200,000, and to install pickleball courts at Westminster Village, Bowling Green, and Russell Parish Parks for 600,000, and for park playgrounds at 10 Parks for 6.5 million, for a total of 7.3 million dollars. The number 15 is park buildings and irrigation system improvements at Margie L. Rice College and Blakely Parks for a total of 800,000. Number 16 is LED conversions for basketball courts and ball diamonds for 600,000. We have number 17 at 3.5 million for storm drain improvements. And then number 18 is improvements to land that the city owns on Westminster and Cherry for public use. These are simple improvements to convert the current dirt locks in order to facilitate outdoor recreation or perhaps outdoor dining pop-up opportunities. So those are the five items that are under community improvements. And I'm going to stop here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Can you, maybe this is a Jake Know question. Can you explain the storm drain improvement? That's a big-ticket item there. Is there other ways to fund those?
For these storm drain improvements, this is a big-ticket items that typically we don't have any funding beside taking from either a general funds or the street improvement funds. So this is just basically addressed the issue that we have a metal corrugated pipe, which more than 50 years old, and they, they pretty much outlast their life right now. This will be lining all of those lines and will extend their life to at least another 20 years or so. And, and also this address other, two more location is flooding within the city. So this project would definitely meet the requirement from the ARPA fund.
Okay.
Okay, I will move on to community assistance projects. We have seven of them, beginning with a food resiliency program to support lower-income households and seniors with food resources at 500,000. Number 20 is a utility bill assistance for 120,000. That would be a program through the Family Resource Center. Number 21 is a business grant program for technology upgrades for 500,000. These would be mini-grants to assist small businesses in upgrading their technology to better facilitate digital and online transactions. Number 22 is a tenant-based rental assistance program, which would provide 500,000 towards a rental subsidy for assistance to individuals experiencing homelessness or in jeopardy of being homeless to help them afford housing costs. And number 23 is marketing and branding program for Little Saigon at 300,000. This was recommended in the Little Saigon Blueprint for Investment, a marketing and branding program to support tourism and help the small businesses in that area to recover from the pandemic. Number 24 is a business loan forgiveness in an amount of 360,000. This would be to forgive the business loans from the program that the council approved using economic development funds. Those loans payments were to begin last November, and a number of the recipients have informed the city that they are unable to pay due to either business closure or continued negative impacts from COVID. And number 25 is a business license renewal rebate. This figure of 1,425,000 constitutes one year's worth of receipts. So that would be rebating every business that had renewed their license during a year. So those are the seven programs under community assistance. I'd be happy to stop here and answer any questions that the council may have.
Yeah, I think that area of community assistance really helped. I think that we respond to the call of several residents who spoke in oral communication. And one of the thanks, obviously, the staff for for their dedication to come up with really, really good items in this area. I really appreciate that.
Okay, I'll, I'll move on to our next category of addressing homelessness. Number 26 is to hire two full-time caseworkers for homeless and mental health outreach. This is an annual cost of about 200,000, but the total is only 850,000 because the first year would be supplemented by a $150,000 grant. The CityNet contract here, number 27 is for 100,000. That would be to cover the period before the caseworkers are hired. The next item is a BWEL community outreach services contract. This is estimated cost of 600,000 based on the contract, splitting the contract with the city of Fountain Valley, and it also includes an estimated 5% annual inflation adjustment. This is a, the BWEL outreach services are a mobile response team that will supplement the resources and services provided by the homeless and mental health outreach teams. And a number 29 is a, an estimated $4 million to apply towards a homeless shelter project. So those are the four items that we have that are directly addressing homelessness. Are there any questions regarding those?
Hmm, any, any Western concerns from maybe the city council?
Could you, number, where is it at? The CityNet, I mean, are we already, we're already paying CityNet as it is now, right? I mean, can you explain, so you're talking about just using, instead of using the current funding source to pay it through this, this funding source? Is that the thought behind it?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to the police chief. This was his, came from the police department. I think it was the package of how we could move forward with, with the, this, the three items, 26, 27, and 28.
Is this every call we were trying to? We were supposed to hire two, and it was budgeted for two homeless liaisons or, or I think, I forgot the term, it's called outreach coordinators. And that was budgeted earlier, and they haven't been hired, and that was supposed to phase out CityNet at some point.
Good evening, mayor, council. To address the vice mayor's questions, you are correct. However, there's been issues with hiring the caseworkers. We have it in our budget for part-time, and right now, they are at a premium. We are having a problem finding part-timers to take, fully-trained part-timers to take that position when other cities offer full-time. So this is our way of fixing that and getting the qualified personnel in to handle this important work.
So that would, we would be to use this, this funding to, to hire full-time employees, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, on number 28, BWEL community outreach service, services contract, what is our portion with Fountain Valley? Is that 50/50 split? Or what is the amount, or what are the works that involve?
So right now, I believe we've discussed splitting it 50/50. We've all also discussed on usage for that. But for right now, being a placeholder, that would be our half. That number can change, but for now, it would be a placeholder as we begin talks, and we want to see if it's even feasible and approved by council before we really dig into this and put a bunch of effort into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, can you, have you heard, I know the city of Huntington Beach is using this BWEL community outreach service. Have you heard anything, any reports from as far as how, how they're performing?
Yes, sir, I have. So far, I've heard nothing but good reports from them. They're very responsive. They have qualified individuals working for them. They, their response time is very good, and they come in during critical events where people are having maybe mental issues or breakdowns or in crisis. They get there fast, they're able to take over for police. And this way, we're, we're not involved in that, and it's somebody that's much more trained and capable of handling a situation like that. And they bridge the gap where caseworkers or CityNet might not be the best alternative for that individual.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the homeless shelter project? What's that 4 million entail? What does it get us?
At this point, this is also just a placeholder to identify that we want to move forward, and we would probably look at perhaps matching funds or working with other cities. So we wanted to identify some amount of money to apply to that as well as the next item, which is the affordable housing development. We also allocated 4 million dollars there. It's a similar kind of effort to kind of pick a number that at least we could initiate and perhaps then find other funds or other partners in that type of program.
Is there any other housing effort as far as you were supposed to try to get together or to try to put together some, a job, a project that we can apply for the Home Key funding?
Yes, later this month, we have a meeting with the county about Home Key and other, other grant resources to, and, and that is part of our program of, of trying to identify an appropriate project. They had already done it for this year, so we want to get ahead of the next year. Hopefully, there's going to be funding there for the Home Key project. And we are also have, as we discuss the CDBG, we had 1.2 million that came back through that program that might, might be able to marry with, you know, other funding. So we are trying to find a project that would work, and we are also trying to find those resources that we could apply. And this is one of those that we were identifying as potentially being an amount that we could apply towards that type of a project.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, if I may, if I may speak?
Please, please.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, for me, I, I know you guys are, are putting, staff's putting placeholders on, on these expenses or you're not really, this is like, I'm, I'm gathering that, tell me if I'm wrong, you're just trying to get the skill for things before you, because you don't want to dig into it. At least it'll be time consuming, correct, staff? Is that right?
Yes, so these, again, these were ideas that we came up with, with estimated costs based on the time that we were looking, you know, going through this list. And this list really started get back in August. It, it, the, the process began in August as far as, you know, having dialogue among our, among our, you know, among the leadership at that time to come up with, yeah, to come up with things.
Why am I saying that is because I feel like you're kind of throwing everything like mud on the wall sort of thing. You know, some of these things I don't feel, this is only what, how I feel is I really don't feel some of the things are not applicable to the time. You know, and so I think that if, if, since you're asking for a general, you want to get a general feel. My general feel would be, I would want to put my money towards something, number one, more permanent, like a permanent solution. I mean, I love like, you know, homeless shelters, things like that, but I'll give you an example of what I don't think I like. And I'm just saying, I don't think is because I think that's why I'm asking for more time and more input from the community more. You know, we've got to look at at the list of, of this list and perhaps come up with other, more than just this list, not limited to this list. So we got to have time for that and to digest. And so you're not asking for a, a decision tonight. So I, I get what you're saying, but I'm just, I'll give you an example of what I don't like. Let's say, I think if, I, I don't need to go back, but I'll just kind of from the top of my head, it was like, say, for instance, business permits, correct? And it's like one point four million dollars. That's really the revenue that we should continue to earn. I don't like to be waiving permits like that. What number one is, that's why I'm saying that I, I just get this feel like this is a list that you, like a wish list that you had and as you explain it, which makes a lot of sense that you started this back in August. Okay, so you got to really revise it and you got to really take into account and, you know, the time today and where, where we're, we're heading or winding down with COVID and or micron and how things are right now. And I'm making general statements because what you're asking for is just some general guidelines. Okay, so my thought would be like, I would want, let's say to say business permits, I'll pick that. Well, you know, I really don't want to put my money. I don't want to throw good money after bad sort of thing, you know, idea. Because if I'm going to keep giving money and giving money out and putting money out there and bail out people and just keep bailing and keep bailing. We don't know. I mean, I don't know if I'm not going to go that route, but I'm just asking you to kind of look into some more like a more permanent fix. Not putting a Band-Aid. Let's say if a business is going to fail, it's going to fail. And so I know that we depend on that revenue. So we want to be generous, but we don't want to be giving handouts and, and day after day, we're trying to, you know, to help the economy, help people recover. So I would not want to advocate for throwing good money after bad and continue that trend. Not to say that we didn't have a reason to do that before. So I'm all for, you know, not putting Band-Aids on things anymore. But first and, and first and foremost, the priority goes for fixing the problem at the root cause. And if we could, you know, I want it to be like, say, for instance, homeless. I would rather, I would like to have like a more permanent shelter and, and then not just a temporary shelter, you know? So if you were to give me a choice between one, one or the other, I'd go for the permanent versus the temporary. I'd go for, you know, programs that are going to, some, the money to be used towards programs that we really thought are, you know, if we think they're really good, bring, bring them forth. And maybe this is the time we could dedicate some money towards helping those programs and whatever the programs are. That's why we need to spend the time to dig deep. And so for me, if I were looking at this list and if I have more time and I will have to more time and I would insist on more time, I would just want, I would want you to list all the permanent fixes, okay, versus the temporary fixes. So separate them. Okay? And then, and then so that means that we will be able to look at the list. We list them as according to priority. So priority goes to the permanent fixes. And then if we think that there are some exceptions and we could dedicate some funds towards the, you know, temporary fixes, that's why we still list them, but we don't take them off altogether. They're still there. And then we will go down the list of priorities. But for me, I'm, I'm telling, I'm telling you that I would like more of the permanent fixes, okay? I would like to, I, I, you know, I love what you've got there. It's a pretty big chunk of, of money towards you know, affordable housing development and homelessness. And so let's just look more into that and come up with a list and separate the list. Permanent fix versus temporary fix. I, I don't like these. Like I said, you know, I don't know about the business loan forgiveness, business licensing, and that's just giving away money, just keep giving away money. And, and we won't have any money left to do anything good for the community that's lasting, things like that. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
I can just admit real quick, I mean, this is a starting point, good starting point, good point of discussion. And I think I've, I've made this clear to some staff, Christine, I think. But my, my, my thought is that this is a one-time money that our city is going to receive and we need to make sure that our community is, is put number one and whatever we get, whatever we do, it's going to have a direct benefit in a, in a, the most practical way to our community, first and foremost. Yeah, there's, there's some items here are, are good, are wish lists, but some of these items on here are not going to be a a direct, our, our community, our residents wouldn't even see that those monies, you know, affect, you know, their life positively if, you know, like for instance, some of the upgrades to City Hall, for instance, you know, our, our community, our residents are not going to benefit from that, you know? So that's something that I wouldn't, would not be in favor of. But I mean, this is a good starting point, a good point of discussion and we'd definitely be having more, more discussions on this. So I'm just wanted you kind of let you know how my feeling is. So thank you.
I, I want to personally thank staff for putting, you know, I think the first snap of it. And, you know, it's, it's good items that we can discuss. Although that we have scheduled for a co-session at six o'clock and we are now past the six o'clock already. And I think that now we have some time to look over and give the feedback to the staff. I would like to move to, take no action at this time and then we'll have another study session with more details later on.
Yeah, the rule for the study section that we don't have to take any action. So only to listen to the staff or presentation and members of the council, we give our input. That's all. So there's no.
Can I make a quick remark? Can I make a, can I say, make a quick remark real quick?
Okay, please.
First of all, just appreciate this, this study session. It's, it's a, it's a icebreaker. So there's no perfect. Appreciate the city staff, the city manager to put it for, put it, put it study session together and do, did everything by the book. So yeah, it's a icebreaker, you know, that's, now we can have by a direction where to go and what we want. So well, thank you very much for that and looking forward to the next one. So, thank you.
All right. So if we don't have any, any other comment or input from members of the council, I'd like to adjourn a meeting in the next regular meeting will be seven P M.
We'll close this, right?
Yes, I'm going to end, I'm, and this, you have to log on to the other sign in.
Okay.
Okay, see you in a bit.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
So we have to lock out first.